Good evening. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for April twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March two thousand and twenty five. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being recorded. As with our in-person comment, uh, meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you received the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good evening, Madam Chair, present.
Good evening, Ms. Better Baraza.
Present.
Okay, the floor is yours, Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, to begin with the hearings for five P M. First case is B O A one, five, six, six, one, six, five, with the address of sixteen Cook Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present to explain to the board?
Yes, uh, my name is Derek Rubenoff, uh, from Derek Rubenoff Architect at eighty-two Spring Street, um, in West Roxbury, and the architect for the project, uh. The owner just tried to call me, but, uh, it's missing the link, um. Uh, give me one second. I will just email him the link quickly. Second. One second. Good, yes, so, um, the project's pretty simple. Um, what we're trying to do is put a, uh, a roof deck onto a existing two-family house. It's going to be on the back extension. And, um, send anyone. So, um, it's, uh, it's an existing, uh, extension that's out there. It's two-story extension. So the roof deck actually will be on the lower part of the roof. It won't be on the main, um, part of the house roof, which is in the front where there's a third story. Um, and, uh, uh, we need relief for a side setback and for, uh, and for, uh, a rear setback. Um, there's a little bit of a cantilever over the, uh, stair below. Uh, we'll work that out when we get to structural. Um, but other than that, um, it's, it's really pretty simple. It's a private roof deck for the, for the upper unit. Uh, we'll replace one rear window, um, on that third story there with a door, full, full-height door, insulated doors that would go out to, um, this private roof deck. Uh, the roof deck is not something that would be seen by, certainly not by anybody at the street because it's blocked by the third floor.
Can I ask, uh, in the image on the left, uh, is that overhang existing or are you causing it with the roof deck?
Uh, we would propose to have that over, overhang. That would be a new overhang. So the existing roof does not overhang anywhere near to that extent or at all. So what we would do is actually build the roof deck so that it has that overhang. Um, and the reason for that is the, the owner, uh, was requesting that particular size of the roof deck. That just overhangs a, a egress stair. It actually provides some protection from rain and snow to the existing second means of egress from that upper unit.
And how wide is that? How wide does that extend beyond the building?
Um, that extends. I'm just gonna check the, uh, the drawing file right now on my computer. That extends. Give me about five seconds here. Okay, that extends, it looks like it extends about, just slightly less than three feet. And that is, um, that's not, um, projecting over, uh, on any property lines. Um, that little courtyard in the back is, is part of sixteen Cook's lot. So that has nothing to do with the side setback, uh, relief that we need. That's actually on the, uh, the other side of the deck. That's right against the property line.
Any questions, Ms. Better Browser?
I don't have any questions, but the B P D A did give a recommendation that, um, the project should eliminate the overhang.
Yep. Okay, uh, anything else you want to add before we open up the public testimony? Nope. Okay, let's, uh, let's have public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, and a butter's meeting was held to sixteen Cook Street on February twenty eighth. Since that time, this office has received zero letters in support and two in opposition. Um, they do cite, uh, that the, the deck that was being built, um, other roof structure would be too close to their property. Uh, with that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
So, sorry, Mr. Breen. So both of the abutters, or these are abutters who are concerned that the-
Yes, one of the letters was specifically that the size of the deck, um, I believe it was from fourteen Cook Street, the size of the deck, it would be too, they thought, they felt it was gonna be too close to their property. Um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other ways to?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay.
Well, I see one raised hand, John.
I'm sorry. It's still up. Uh, oh, yep, sorry about that. Yep, John, go ahead. I apologize. Sent a request to unmute you. Uh, John, are you looking to give testimony here? I see your hand is raised. Oh, he's on his two guests. Um, John, I sent a request to both. Oh, there we go. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, John.
My name is John Agri. Uh, my wife and I own fifteen and seventeen Sheath Street, which is immediately behind sixteen Cook Street. And, uh, my, my letter is, uh, one of the ones that Sean Green was referring to, uh, in opposition. My, my bedrooms and my bathrooms for both, both of my units, fifteen and seventeen Sheath Street, uh, um, within twenty-one feet of this deck. And I think, I think that's pretty close. So I just wanted to get on the horn and, and, uh, have you guys hear me, hear me, uh, hear me out.
Sir, is, is it the overhang that causes the proximity? Because otherwise, other than the overhang, it, it falls within their footprint.
Not that overhang, it's the whole deck.
No, it's, yeah, it's, it's the whole deck. Um, um, it's, it is on their footprint. That's right. Um, but it's within twenty-one feet of my bedrooms and bathrooms.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other raised hands? Okay, any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, may I, uh, be allowed to respond to any of the-
Sure, please.
Yeah, thank you so much. Um, if, if we could just go to the, the first page of the presentation and zoom on, on the photograph that from the satellite, you'll see that, uh, most of the neighboring houses, uh, including the direct of butter have, um, have also existing roof decks. So, um-
Are you talking about the first page? Can we scroll to the first page?
Yeah, that, that photo-
Sorry, uh, keep going.
Yeah, that, that image right there in the middle of the page, uh, to the bottom right. You'll see that it's a satellite view and you'll see that neighboring properties also have roof decks. So this is in context of existing situations. Uh, similar, similar situations with roof decks. Um, so I, I would argue that anybody concerned about a roof deck being near their property already has roof decks near their property.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the deck footprint, um, is, is, uh, relocated in a way that eliminates the overhang, but not for B P D A design review, just a proviso to eliminate the overhang.
Is there a second?
Derek.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next, we have case B O A one, five, four, two, four, two, six, with the address of eighty-two Washington Street. Is the applicant and or their representative present?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is attorney Patrick Sweeney with an address of two, six, one, Main Street, Charleston. I'm here tonight representing Paul Wren, the owner of eighty-two, uh, Washington Street. Uh, we're seeking to enlarge dormers that are on the front and the rear of this property. Uh, if we scan down to, I think it's the sixth page, um, you'll, we'll see a rendering. Keep going, it's A two, one. There we are. So on the left is the existing, uh, and on the right is the proposed. Uh, if we scan, scroll down yet again, we can see the rear, uh, the existing on the left, the proposed on the right. Uh, the rear of this property overlooks Ruth of Fidav, the front of the property overlooks the Charleston skating rink. The two, uh, violations, uh, height and, uh, new structure restrictions. With respect to the height, I note that we are not increasing the actual height of the building. The building is now thirty-eight feet. However, the dorm is, uh, at thirty-five, four inches and thirty-six, six inches. So that generates the, uh, the height violation. Obviously, we're changing the roof line, so there is the, uh, roof structure restrictions. This is Mr. Wren's, uh, home for the last twenty years, and he expects for the next twenty years. Uh, he's doing this to increase living space for his family. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, Madam Chair.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sean Breen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, uh, and a butter's meeting was held for eighty-two Washington Street on February fourteenth. Since that time, this office has received one letter of support and not an opposition. With that, we would defer our judgment to the board.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Okay. Sorry, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of, of approval with a proviso that the plans be submitted to the Department of Parks and Recreation for review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case B O A one, four, five, two, four, four, eight, with the address of three thirty-two to three forty, Sum- Summer Street. If the applicant and or the representative is present, would they explain the case to the board, please?
Good afternoon. My name's Chris Kennedy. Kennedy Law Office at one thirty-two Lincoln Street, Boston. Um, here to, uh, represent Beck South and Carriage LLC. Uh, the applicant seeks, seeks to continue to use the premises as a public parking lot for a fee, passing forty vehicles till December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, I think I've sent, uh, as much information as I could to, uh, the board supporting, uh, this appeal and, just want to say I've been employed by the applicant for various capacities since nineteen seventy-six. Uh, I'm familiar with this lot. Um, we're doing everything we can to maintain a safe and clean lot. And it's a year-round endeavor. The applicant's been doing it for decades throughout the city. Uh, we've expressed cooperation with the, um, Fort Point Neighborhood Association and been ongoing in working with them to, uh, maintain a clean and, um, safe lot. For example, we've eliminated some of the graffiti that, uh, the F P N A has pointed out. There's, uh, more I think that needs to be removed, which we will, uh, gladly attempt to do. And there's also an issue with the, uh, plantings um, in the landscaping, which we have tried to remedy and will continue to do whether, um, when the weather cooperates. Um, other than that, we are, uh, willing to, uh, maintain the continuity with the neighborhood and, uh, offer, uh, necessary parking for that neighborhood. And whatever needs to be addressed, we will continue to work with the neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, no questions, but the P P D A did comment that they would like to ensure that there's adequate screening from the public way.
And my question is, um, to the person who was just speaking. So you've made, uh, you made strides to take care of the things that the Neighborhood Association has pointed out?
Uh, yes, uh, and the screening, uh, with plants is um, one of the major issues. And, uh, I think that was formally done in two thousand and twenty. There was a new fence put in, um, a metal edge ridge, the planting bed. And, uh, it's, it can be improved, I, uh, I agree, and we'll try to do that.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there a public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butter's meeting was hosted on January tw- twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four in regards to three, three, two, to three forty, Summer Street. During that time, a butter's and the Fort Point Neighborhood Association raised concerns about the planting and maintenance of a landscape buffer, parking standards on the lot, litter and mitigation of graffiti. The general concern related to ongoing requests of the applicant, um, relating to ongoing requests of the applicant is to basically bring the parcel up to neighborhood standard and expectations. The Fort Point Neighborhood Association feels there is not enough evidence of progress to date. The applicant has exchanged emails to respond to concerns this week in an effort to remedy points raised by the neighborhood. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Lydia, can you clarify what they mean bringing, by bringing it up to the standards of the neighborhood? Are, are you, are they referring to the graffiti and the landscaping or additional items?
So the Fort Point Neighborhood Association, um, and the focus on the call, there was a specific punch list uh, of items that, um, were outlined to, to bring the lot up to. Um, I think what's happening in the neighborhood, especially at this point, is you're seeing a lot of, you know, developments and the seat board is kind of coming up to a certain standard and, um, I think that it butters just wanted to see more of the same, um, from this, the slot. Uh, graffiti was definitely of concern.
Thank you. Laura.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura from Council's office. At this moment, Council would like to go on record in opposition due to lack of community input. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Laura, I'm gonna make you a panelist, and I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair. Uh, would the applicant like to respond to those concerns?
Sure, uh.
And how to remedy, I guess, is maybe the better comment question?
Yeah, well, I'm pretty sure that, um, extra mulch and maybe new plants can be put in. Uh, I did exchange a, um, email um, with Mr. Reedy, who is part of the Fort Point Neighborhood Association. And, um, he's mentioned that, and I might have forwarded to you, see, see, the, uh, email. He was willing to wait until May to, um, eliminate some of the remaining uh, hard-to-get-to graffiti, which we're willing to do. We did eliminate one spot that's prominently on the Boston Wharf Road and Summer Street wall abutment. Um, we also have again, uh, um, plants that can certainly remedy the situation, and that's, and it should be an easy fix. And we'll do anything we can to, to satisfy that, and we've been willing to do that. It shouldn't be an, an issue, um, but-
All right, thank you. I think we've heard enough. Um, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes B P D A design review for, like, a site plan, uh, in which the applicant, um, can provide new screening and landscaping to the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Next, we have, excuse me, case B O A one, five, five, four, three, eight, six, with the address of five fifteen East First Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Hi, my name's Karen Pham. I recently, um, signed a lease for a space on five fifteen East First Street. Um, I need the occupancy of this space changed from commercial to a nail studio. I'll just be moving in mobile furniture and there won't be any construction done.
Uh, any questions from the board?
None is pretty straightforward.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butter's meeting was hosted on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, during which time attendees were generally supportive of the proposal. Our office has since received one letter of support from an abutter. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Sorry, did I interrupt anybody?
No, no, you're good.
Thank you. Laura Deladana for Council's office. Uh, at this time, the council would like to go on record and support this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I have no raised hands, Madam Chair, thank you. Hey, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case B O A one, five, six, eight, two, four, three, with the address of thirty-six to forty-two West Broadway. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Uh, yes, Mr. Secretary, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quilty, Miller, Hanley, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston, uh, here on behalf of the appellant property owner. Uh, with me tonight is Derek Rubenoff, who's our project architect, and Jennifer Engelhardt from the property ownership, who's on, I see, as an attendee. Very simple, Madam Chair. This is just to confirm occupancy of a long-existing, uh, martial arts studio, which is in the existing basement of this existing mixed-use, uh, building on West Broadway in South Boston. There's no new work to be done. This martial arts studio's been there for over a decade. I think what happened was, was there was an original permit back in two thousand and eleven that somehow got abandoned and never followed through for this occupancy. Um, and so we're here today asking for approval, uh, of this longstanding occupancy for this, uh, fitness use in the building. Uh, we did receive an I S D violation notifying the property owner of this issue, and that's why we're here today to remedy that violation for a failure to close out that permit from, again, ten-plus years ago. So we're just looking to confirm an occupancy, uh, with the board here tonight. Happy to answer any questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. So this will, basically, there'll be no construction, no change to the footprint.
Absolutely not, yeah, Mr. Stenbridge, that's correct. This is there now. It's been there for ten years. There's no changes. There's no changes to anything at all. It's literally just making sure that the records at I S D are up to what's actually happening in the building, so.
Thanks.
Uh, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant notified the neighborhood of the proposal through flyers and or mailers to a butter's. Noah Butter's meeting was hosted in regards to this matter. The West Broadway Neighborhood Association supports this proposal. At this time, our office is unaware of any concern with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. At this time, Council would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have case B O A one, five, seven, three, seven, eight, eight, with the address of four seventeen to four twenty-three C West Broadway. If the applicant and or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Yes, uh, again, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott, Quilty, Miller and Hanley, twenty-eighth State Street in Boston, uh, here on behalf of B-Tone Fitness. With me tonight is, uh, M J Margaret Jackson from B-Tone. Uh, they are a locally, uh, female-owned boutique fitness center in not least use. They hold group classes primarily geared towards women. Uh, they are looking to relocate and expand from their existing location, literally directly across the street at four sixteen to four eighteen West Broadway, uh, which is at the corner of F Street. They've been there for about five years. At this lo- at the location across the street, they're looking to move to this location. It's slightly bigger, which is part of the reason for the move. It's about four hundred fifty square feet bigger. Um, there's already a dance studio in the building. It's an existing, uh, this is an existing, uh, mixed-use building. It's, this would be above the C V S for those of you who are familiar with the area. Um, so it is formerly an office space, so, um, you know, requires zoning relief at this location, just like, uh, it did at the original location five years ago, which, uh, obviously this board granted, or a previous membership of this board granted, uh, a few years ago, but all the same hours, all the same, uh, you know, operations, classes, et cetera, uh, as they have successfully operated for five years, uh, across the street. So again, similar to the other one, uh, just looking to ask for occupancy here. Uh, this is a new use, uh, versus the, the previous matter, which was an existing use, but uh, similar scenario as well, where there's no exterior work to be done, nothing to the envelope of the building, just uh, interior fit out, as you can see here on the screen, uh, for this fitness use. So happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
With that, may I, uh, may I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Lydia Plasky with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butter's meeting was hosted on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, during which time the proposal was generally well-received. At this time, our office is unaware of any concerns with this application. We would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Laura Tilly Donna from Councilman's Office. At this moment, he would like to go on record and support of this proposal. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, have your raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put a motion for of approval.
With the second?
Sir?
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I tried to give you two easy ones compared to.
Uh, thank, we appreciate it. Try to do that on, try to do that on Tuesday, too, please.
Uh, I got one easy one, too, I hope. Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five seven three eight eight five with the address of eighteen Pond Circle. If the applicant and or their representative is present, they explain to the board, please.
I am here on behalf of uh Richard Rianella, the owner of a single-family home uh in Jamaica Plain at eighteen Pond Circle.
Can you speak up? I can't. Who, who, can you speak up, Mr. Santana?
Is it better now?
Yeah.
Again, I am here on behalf of Richard Rianella, the owner of the single-family residence at eighteen Pond Circle. The uh proposed project is in violation of the floor area ratio. Uh, we are slightly over uh the minimum uh uh the maximum, I'm sorry, and uh we are proposing to add a shed over on the rear of the property, which is about twenty-seven feet in length and two doors uh on the front of the building, two gamas, that are about eight feet in width. Uh, the project complies with all the dimensional requirements, uh side yard, front yard, uh rear yard and and building height. Uh, this is, this area in the, the attic space will be used for an additional bedroom and a bathroom. Uh, just uh uh the reason for that is half of the attic space uh uh under the second floor has an elevated ceiling height and that limits uh the access to it. So the owner decided to finish this that half on the left side, and that accounts for about three hundred, just slightly over three hundred ninety square feet in area. Uh, the area on the right, as you can see from these plans, on the proposed attic plan, that's original uh since the ceiling height for the second floor has been elevated. Uh, other than that, the building elevations on the next uh plan will show you the uh uh two gamas, uh which are about eight feet in in width on the front of the building, and in the rear, again, that is about twenty-seven feet in length. Uh, there would be a bathroom and the stairs that access the uh attic space has been modified in order to comply with the core requirements for threat arises, uh minimum dimensions. Uh, other than that, that summarizes the the project. If you have any questions on behalf of the applicant, I should.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
No questions at all.
May I have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. ONS hosted a Butters meeting, which was described as positive, after that meaning we did receive one letter in support and one letter in opposition. Uh, opposition letter was from Director Butter, who expressed concerns regarding uh the balcony, potential loss of privacy. Uh, the applicant went on to meet with the Jamaica Hills Association, uh which voted not to oppose uh the proposal. And then on to the JPNC Zoning Committee, uh which voted uh in favor of the proposal. Uh, with that information, we'll refer to the board at this time. I should have copies of both of those letters. Thank you.
Well, give us the Newman. Any other raised hands? Nope, I have no additional raised hands. Uh, would the applicant like to respond before we take a vote?
I just wanna uh thank everybody for for uh for participating in this process. Um, um, I'm doing this really for, I've lived in the neighborhood, my family has for sixty-five years. My brother is is my neighbor. Um, my children grew up in the neighborhood, and I'm really doing this because of uh the high cost of housing in the city of Boston. And my, my hope and my dream would be someday one of my girls would wanna live into in 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 it, live in, live in the, in the house. And in closing, I wanna thank my neighbors. I I believe that every, every neighbor uh supported me either verbally or writ- or written, every owner occupant, I should say, um except for one. Uh, and I really didn't see much disagreement with that person. They were, they actually were pretty neutral. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I find this project to be a very modest um addition, and with that, I'm gonna put for a motion of disapproval.
Of approval, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Uh, is, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you. Next, we have case BOA one five one eight three eight zero with the address of one oh four Child Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present.
Yes, for the record, Lawrence Estacara, one seventy-five Federal Street. With me is Dr. Teresa Spillane, uh one of the owners of the property, and Chris Hosford, who is the architect. Uh, this is a property which was converted to residential use about forty years ago. And Dr. Spillane and Mr. Nemzow now want to uh change uh the property. There've been numerous discussions uh with the neighbors. Significant changes have been made since the original plans were filed, which Chris Hosford will review, and we made it through the neighborhood process in Jamaica Plain and got a unanimous vote from the uh zoning committee of the Neighborhood Council. Chris, you wanna review the changes to the plans?
Sure, and am I able to share my screen?
Uh, nope. What, what you submitted is what we have.
So we had gone through a public process, numerous um uh neighbor meetings and then JPNDC. Um, and there were significant changes from this plan to what was approved at Jamaica, the JPNDC.
Okay, so we don't have your most current plans, then?
Apparently not. They were never transferred. I don't know.
And would you be, um, so here's the site plan. Is the locations of what you're proposing the same, or has it changed?
So basically, if you look at the site plan, the proposed single-story addition on the left has been removed.
Okay, perfect.
That no longer exists.
Got it. Okay, so I I would recommend, Madam Chair, a motion of deferral, so we can see those um these drawings, because that might change a lot, the BPDA's recommendation, which literally focuses on that structure.
I, I would agree. Um, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to put for a motion of deferral.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
So, how do we get those plans to you? Cause we were.
I think we need to vote first.
Let, let us vote, and then um the staff can help you with that. So, uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. So please, yeah, work with the 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 ISD staff to make sure that you're providing the most updated plans.
Just a note, Madam Chair, uh, May sixteenth is available.
Okay, does that work for the applicant?
Yes.
Thank, thank you.
Here with me. Next, we have case BOA one five two one six two two four with the address of three seventy-nine to three eighty-one Blue Hill Avenue. If the applicant and or their representative is present, they explain to the board, please.
Yes, uh, Antonio Lepe, the new owner of La Cuchara Restaurant is here, and Jack Bruno, I work with him. And we're here to uh remove a proviso from La Cuchara Restaurant and grant a proviso to the new owner, Antonio, who purchased the property in August of two thousand twenty-three, or purchased the restaurant, I should say.
Uh, any changes to the, the interior, exterior, or just the proviso?
There were no changes whatsoever, just the proviso to the new.
Thank, thank you. Uh, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would like to defer to the judgment of this board at this time. Run aware of any concerns regarding this proposal. I would, that'll defer to the board. Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Question of approval?
You have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five five four eight one six with the address of four to ten Minot Street. The applicant and or their representative is present, they explain to the board, please.
Hi, can you raise your hand if you're on for this proposal? Oh, yep, I see, Amanda. Um, gonna make you a panelist, Amanda. You can just um unmute yourself once you um change statuses. Can you hear us?
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, so we just need to update the occupancy of this space. Um, this building at uh Ten Minet Street is part of Harbor Health Services. Um, our health center, Daniel Dreskal Nappon's Health Center, is right across the street. Um, and we have been operating our food pantry out of the three ninety-eight Nappon's Avenue location up until, uh, we actually moved locations in twenty nineteen, but something happened with our application, uh, our original application, and we never got through the final steps um to get the address updated to the Ten Minet Street. Um, and we had for the last couple of years, an inspector uh when they came to inspect our food pantry space, inspected the Ten Minet Street space, so it has already been inspected, but I guess the occupancy just needs to be updated. Um, there's, we're not planning on changing anything about the building.
All right, thank you. Uh, questions from the board?
No.
Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Uh, we have the applicant circulate flyers to a Butters within three hundred feet. Uh, we did not hear any concerns from those Butters. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Madam Chair, have your raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put for a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA one five seven five zero four one with the address of forty six, forty-six R Chickatobit Street.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Oh, sorry.
It's the app, uh, if you're the.
The applicant's here.
That's me. I jumped the gun. I'm sorry, Norm.
Okay.
Let's proceed.
Um, Dean, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is James Christopher of Six Eight Six Architects with the business address of Ten Forbes Road and Bray Tree. I'm here tonight on behalf of Ellen McDonough, who is the homeowner of forty-six R Chickatobit Street. Proposal is to construct a uh front-side entry. Uh, if you look at the elevation here, the little doghouse to the right of the front porch to create direct access into the existing basement. Um, it's not living space in the basement, it's storage, laundry room, and that sort of stuff, but this would allow the homeowner um some yard storage space and that sort of stuff. The only violation is the extension of a non-conforming use. Uh, we held at a Butters meeting, the project was uh supported. We went to the Pope's Hill Civic Association, the project was well received there as well. Uh, with that, I'll happily answer any questions.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board?
No.
May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, the Butters meeting was held. No concerns were raised in that meeting. Uh, they went on to meet with the Pope's Civic Association, no concerns as well. Uh, many feeling this project's proposal was very diminutive. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one five two nine zero seven seven with the address of one sixty-two to one sixty-four Fairmont Street. The applicant and or their representative is present, they explain, please.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is the homeowner, William Evans. Um, we are trying to uh create a living space up in our attic. And right now, I think it exceeds the livable space, um allowable space of living space. So we're trying to get a uh a variance to approve this uh job. Uh, we have talked to the neighbors, talked to the Codman Square Neighborhood Association, and got approval from all of them. I'm looking for approval from the chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Our office previously hosted a Butters meeting for this, where the applicant worked with neighbors. Uh, they went on to the Codman Square Civic Association and can confirm uh that group voted to support this proposal and submitted a letter, uh which we forwarded to the board, uh without defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA one five six six two seven zero with the address of fourteen Woodfield Street. Along with that, we have case BOA one five six four nine five one with the address of sixteen Woodfield Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, they explain, please.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members, I should say. So I, we are, we are hoping, we're looking for permission to subdivide this lot into two separate parcels and to change the applicant, occupancy, occupancy, excuse me, um, from one single family to two single family dwellings, with permission from the board, please.
Great. Um, are there questions from the board? All right, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office deferred to the judgment of this board. Some background information, the community process. Uh, we had the applicant circulate a flyer to a Butters within three hundred feet. We did not hear any concerns from them, and we're unaware of any concerns at this time. Uh, they went on to meet with the Talbot Norfolk Triangle, uh which voted to support this proposal, from what I understand. Uh, with that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
We have no raised hands. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion for the two projects, and uh it would be for approval.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one five six four three six six with the address of thirty-two Lorry Avenue. If the applicant is and or their representative is present, they explain, please.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Beblav. Uh, I don't know why you cannot see that video, but uh, okay, this is Beblav Das. I'm from thirty-two Lorry Avenue, West Roxbury. Uh, and with me, my wife Rita is there, as well as my architect, Mr. Harry is here.
Uh, Harold McOnigal, architect, one oh three Keystone Street, West Roxbury, Mass.
And uh, we have been a resident of Boston for the last three, thirty years. And uh, we have been a resident of Boston for the last three thirty years, and at thirty-two Laurie Avenue. West Roxbury almost seventeen years. It is a colonial house with living area fourteen twenty-eight. Square feet, three bedroom on the second floor, and kitchen dining living on the first floor. As we are approaching retirement age, and it is sometimes difficult to climb the. Staircase, we'd like to have one additional bed bedroom on the first floor. Besides that, we now have extended family as my daughter got married and visit sometimes. This makes us to think the, for the extension of our house to the first floor. We'd like to add one bedroom with a nattered bath and remodel kitchen. Will be an addition of four hundred forty-eight square feet. Uh, as the architect plan. As you can see in the surveyor plot, that will be extending in sixteen feet. But still we'll have a nineteen to twenty back here, and uh. Uh, particularly, I got a several uh, uh, support letter from my neighbors. Almost eight letters, I submitted that, and W R N C was talking about in. In neighborhood uh, community, they approved my plan. And uh, again, thank you for your uh, consideration.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board?
Um, I don't have any um questions, but um, just reading the BPDA's. Comments um regarding kind of. Uh, an alignment with. Um, precedents in regards to rear depth. And um. What, what would be your, what's your rear yard setback with your proposal?
It's just short of twenty feet, nineteen plus.
Nineteen, okay, and um, what's required?
I think it's thirty, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
Okay. Okay, so you would have um nineteen feet. Uh, until you reach your, your neighboring property.
Yes.
Which is in the rear, it seems like it's to uh, kind of a driveway.
Yeah, we are, we're, it is a corner lot.
Yeah, it's in a corner lot, there's a driveway, it's not, it's not um. Uh, it's not facing kind of open space.
No.
Okay, great, thank you, I don't have any further questions.
Yeah, I mean, just to add to that, then Ms. Better Brazza, I mean, the, the BPDA notes do also indicate that other rear yard depths. While not as uh. Significant uh. Are, are not off by much, so like twenty-four feet as an example, so I don't know if uh the. Uh, applicant or their architect has any insight into that as well as far as uh, abutting, you know, nearby properties.
No, I didn't do any research into that.
Okay. All right, thank you, uh, with that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office like deferred to the judgment of this board, uh, with the applicant circulate a flyer to a butters within three hundred feet. No concerns were raised, as he mentioned, uh, many neighbors were supportive and wrote letters. Uh, he went on to meet with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council on uh, March nineteenth. Uh, two butters were in attendance and spoke in support of the project. Uh, the council ultimately voted uh, eight to zero in support of this project. Uh, as I mentioned, we're unaware of any concerns at this time, like to defer to the board, thank you.
We have no way. Thanks. Uh, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, um, you know, I think if, if it's gonna keep this family here. Um, you know, to stay for the long run, I would like to support the project and perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Snabbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, done.
And next, we have case B O A. One five six. Three seven three six. With the address of two ten North Harvard Street. If the applicant and or their representative is present, will they explain to the board, please?
Uh, good evening. Um. Right, you've got the drawings, my name is Campbell Ellsworth, I am the architect. For, uh, yeah, that, that's the one, thank you so much. Um, I'm the architect for the. Owners of the Sofra Bakery, which is currently. In Cambridge, Massachusetts. Um. The building. That you see here on the site plan. Is a Harvard-owned building. It's a single-story. Uh, masonry building. Um, it's about uh, five thousand square feet. Interior space, it is at the corner of North Harvard. And Bertram Street. The entrance to this building is right at that corner. Um, my clients have entered into a lease with Harvard. Um, Harvard did a significant amount of work. In this building already. In terms of primarily um upgrading HVAC. Site drainage, electrical service. Uh, et cetera. And they then handed over the building to my clients. Uh, and their builder, um. The layout. Uh, well, we, we are here before you. To request a variance, so on this drawing. You will see in that. Uh, blue bubble is the request to install. Uh, a walk-in cooler. As is needed for the proper operation of this bakery and cafe. Um, I just point out, there is a. There, there is a, there is an odd provision in the zoning ordinance that says. That a, on a corner lot. The owner, in this case Harvard. Uh, may choose which. Which street frontage they choose to. Use as quote, the front, and in fact, in the. In the construction work and the modifications that Harvard performed, they in fact did that, they chose that Bertram. Street on the top of the drawing would in fact be the front. Well, in fact, they did not. Expand the footprint. So that issue of front. Side-side rear never came up with the Harvard renovation, when. My client took over the building and we applied for building permits, we followed suit. And requested that Bertram Street be considered the front. Um, in this case, in this zone, the side. Setback requirements are in fact zero, so that our. Walk-in cooler, which you can see in that bubbled area. Would have complied, well, in fact, when we got. To the building department, um, and we worked with a wonderful plans examiner, Jordi Segalas Perez. Um, he informed me and our client, my client, that. In fact, no, the North Harvard Street side would in fact need to be considered the front, therefore. Where we proposed the cooler. Was the rear, and therefore we would be in violation. And that's why we're here before you today. Um.
So can I ask a quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
So, ha- has there been any dimensional change to this project, or are these conforming? Or, sorry, uh, are these pre-existing uh, conditions?
Uh, absolutely pre-existing, you can see on the, yeah, absolutely pre-existing.
Thank you, so adding the cooler is not adding space, your, it's, it's interior that was, or, you know, the space was already there.
That's correct, yes, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a. Technically, I, I, but I think in terms of G F A, I think we were still compliant. We are not expanding the footprint of the building itself to house. People, but this is a effectively a mechanical space that we're looking. Looking to. Um, looking to add, excuse me, sorry for that, okay.
So are there, are there other questions from the board?
But it is a new, it is a new addition, it's just considered mechanical.
It is, that's correct, it is considered mechanical.
Yeah, so um, just, just for clarification, so the North Harvard Street, because of the front entry, it, it, um. It, that's your address, correct, and that's why it was considered a front?
I believe so, yes, Jordi.
I, they, they, I S D has made. These uh clerical errors, so I completely understand um, your request. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Any ques- other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time the mayor's office like deferred to the judgment of this board. Uh, the applicant circulated a flyer to a butters within three hundred feet as a part of their um. Uh, application through licensing as well. Uh, they went on to meet with the Alston Civic Association, where many butters are also members of that civic. Uh, the civic voted to approve, um, some of butters did have questions regarding. Um, how loud um, the uh, outdoor, the walk-in refrigerator would be. Um, and with that, we'll defer to the board at this time, thank you.
Do you have a raised hand? Yep, Paula, go ahead.
Yeah, yes, excuse me, thank you, um, good evening, everyone, I'm Paula Alexander. And my home, I'm a, I'm a homeowner, occupied homeowner at two ten North Harvard Street in Alston. And so I'm on the corner of North Harvard and Kingsley Street. Which is one short block away from, from Bertram Street, um. Excuse me. So the butters um. That are very, very close to this um free. Freezer, uh, do have some major concerns about the noise level. Um, because we assume that the um, the cooling equipment will be running twenty-four seven. Now their backyards are, are really close to this um, this unit. It's um, I mean, the closest unit is probably about uh. Less than twenty feet, up to um. Um, fifty feet from the nearest uh butter. Excuse me, um, we, so this, this freezer is a separate. Unit from the building, um, I want to be sure you understand that, it's not in the building, actually. Um, so at one point, um, the um bakery said that they would try and fit the, the freezer. And the loading dock uh. Side, which is, which it, which is entered from Bertram Street. Rather than the parking lot and North Harvard Street. Um, we also asked what the noise level will be. And which side of the freezer will be access, will the employees be, have access? So would the employees be outside taking a smoking break? Are they gonna be around the freezer? Um, we also asked for additional insulation or something to quiet the freezer down. Um, there is a, a huge pine tree on the business school, have a business school parking lot. That's also in a butter to this property. And we'd like to ask Harvard to um prune uh, the tree and make sure it's, it's uh protected. And he- kept healthy for, for a long time to help buffer the noise. And we'd like to see some other plantings also um, around the um parking lot area. Um, on the diagram, they showed um. You know, parking for ten cars, but they want to put outside seating out there. So I don't think there's gonna be any space in the nice weather for, for parking, um. So, so those are, those are our concerns, and um, all of my butter, butters, the Lopes, the Guzman's, the Norton's. The Albertos and the um Breslins. Um, they, we all have those concerns, so I hope.
Thank you.
That you can uh.
Okay, I have no additional raised hands.
I, I have a question, you're not proposing two parking spaces, right, parking nine and parking ten?
That's the applicant, are you?
Yeah, for the applicant.
Yes, so the requirement. Of this commercial and retail use. Uh, required ten spaces. And if you look again, are you able to bring that?
But so, so um, this application i- is not only for the exterior cooler. You're also requesting, um. How many additional parking spaces to already what you have been given as an allowed?
Uh, our requirement, uh, I, I have a feeling. Our requirement is ten spaces, and you can see the way that those are laid out, so. If you see the box of the building on the bottom left. That is, uh, which is right on North Harvard, that's a proposed outside. Uh, seating area that did not trigger any zoning requirements, and then moving to the right. We have six spots. Uh, another one that's tucked in right, uh, sort of angled, almost ninety degrees. Um, behind that cooler and there is an exterior um, storage area. And then there would be two additional spaces off of Bertram Street. Um, which would sort of hug the uh, delivery access to.
Right, you have, you, you have existing six parking spaces, and you're in this. In this uh, proposal, you're asking for three additional parking spaces.
Yes.
I mean, that's what I'm looking at, at this Google image, you have. Um, six, which I think one seems like it's a handicap accessible.
Um.
It's not noted in the site plan.
Yeah, let me.
So I have a question for um, Madam Chair, did we get any BPDA feedback, because I didn't, I didn't receive one.
Uh, I don't have any from them either.
Okay, um.
Can I ask just the, so I just want to add, because I, I can't remember if Mr. Newman also identified. Uh, or, or state, talked about Austin Civic Association's uh. Position, so I just want to have, make sure we are aware of that as well, because they, they do also mention. Uh, they, they are in support of the project, but also uh, uh, asked that the. Steps be taken to ensure noise abatement. Uh, occurs, so ta- of all mechanical parts and, you know, public safety, et cetera, so I just want. In case the applicant is also unaware of that, that this uh, the issue that the. Uh, a butter just mentioned was also echoed in this letter from Austin Civic. Association, and I don't, and I don't know what you're. So, so how, how are you planning to adjust those uh, noise issues from the coolers, are they, you know, are there any, like, what, you know, et cetera?
Yes, thank you, um, the. Uh, we've been informed by the provider of that walk-in cooler that. The compressor that will be cooling that walk-in cooler and freezer. Can be located anywhere um, relative to that cooler. We were proposing that we push that. Cooling equipment, the compressor equipment, as far away from that southern. Uh, those southern properties as possible, meaning uh. So the, the cooler itself is approximately twenty-nine or thirty, twenty-nine or thirty feet. Twenty-nine or twenty-eight feet from those back property lines, so it's not twenty feet. That's to the, that's to the closest edge of the cooler itself, moving north. The cooler will be approximately twenty, excuse me. Twenty-two feet, so we will, the, the back end of the cooler or the north end will be approximately fifty feet. From the closest residential property, and we are able to put the compressor. Equipment at the very north end of that. Cooler, so approximately forty-eight to fifty feet away from the closest. Residential property, so to answer your question about. How do we address uh, noise issues, the not, it is by putting the compressor. As far away from those residential areas as possible. We've also been told that this compressor is, is very, very quiet, I don't have decibel ratings on that. But it is, you know, they make them extremely efficient these days, and it should not uh, provide. Any nuisance to those southern residential neighbors, and. If we find out that it is um, of any concern, yes, we can erect some sort of screening. Some sort of acoustical screening between that equipment and those residential neighbors.
Okay, thank you, any other questions from the board?
One, one more question regarding clarification, on your drawings, it literally says. That the project was submitted and approved, with the exception of the walk-in cooler. Is it also fair to say that um, you're also requesting those additional parking spaces?
No.
So those, those, those. Spaces has been pre-approved?
Yes.
Okay, so we're only looking at the extra cooler.
We're looking at the cooler and. We're looking at the cooler and the uh, request for. Um, that six point one feet from that right-hand. Property line that is perpendicular to Bertram Street.
Right, that your side yard um, violation?
That's correct.
Right, okay, so. I just want a clarification that we're not approving the parking spaces, but only the side yard setback.
That is correct, that is my understanding.
All right, Norm, is that, is that what you have as well on record? That that's what is being requested, just because I don't have the BPDA's recommendation in front of me?
As far as I can see, I don't see any mention of parking spaces.
Okay.
So with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mister Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Uh, the chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night.
Yes, have a good evening, thank you so much.